Call this meeting to order of the planning board of Flemington for Tuesday, September twenty four, twenty twenty four. All rise as you are able to. This meeting is at all pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, both adequate and electronic notice of this meeting is being provided by way of publication, hunted and county Democrat and Columbia News Newspapers honor about February first, twenty twenty four and January thirtieth, twenty twenty four. In addition, notice that the meeting was posted at the borough Flemington Municipal Building located at thirty eight Park Avenue and any handicapped accessible entrances there too. Posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons if any requesting copies of the same. This meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and maybe rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board might legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate for judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you. Right, Eileen, can we take the vote?
Mayor Carroll?
Here.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yeah.
Mr. Campion is excused. Ms. Giffen?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Dashman is excused. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Waitsman?
Here.
Mr. Semino?
Here.
Ms. Swingle?
Here.
Oh, and Mr. Echo?
Here.
Mr. Show?
Here.
Ms. Kazinski?
Here.
Mr. Clerico?
Here.
And Mr. Harris?
Here.
Is here for Ms. McNannas. And Mr. Troutman is excused.
Okay, item one on the agenda is here for public comments. Is this for anything that is not currently on the agenda? Is there any? I can't see the list of people at the moment, Eileen. Can you tell me?
Uh, there's nobody else in attendance.
Alright, well, that's why I can't see it, probably. So we've got nothing from anybody online, um, and I'm seeing nobody in the room. We'll move on. Just checking, I'm making sure they can see. There's hiding behind the chairs or behind Mr. Galena. Um, alright, item two, mayor comments.
Uh, I think they don't have much, just last night they counseled introduce the map update for the TC zone, um. And, uh, providing things your councilwoman. Hang on.
Okay. We're in the spirit of a very fascinating.
My only item was the map, so.
Okay. Alright, item four, Dennis, HPC comments, please.
Uh, two items, one seventy-one Main Street, the T-Berrys, um, uh, building. We approved a revised location of the outside refrigeration, additional window in the rear of the building, an exhaust hood, vent, a fence around where the trash is gonna go, and then uh, also they're gonna paint the doors and paint trim highlights. So that was approved. Um, I asked, they were coming to the planning board, they said that was their next step. Uh, since it is a change from some of the things that were approved, especially the refrigeration unit where it is. Um, so you'll be getting that, we're still working on the resolution, but uh, it was approved in the meeting. And then the other thing, um, they're drafting a response on Liberty Village, um, no change to what we previously said. Uh, the developer does work on Three Church Street, which is historic, um. He would have to come to the HPC to get approval of any work that's being done. Those are the two items.
Okay, thanks, Dennis.
The question also the council approved the introduction of, um, uh, new, a new temporary sign ordinance at the request of our, um, property maintenance officer. And, um, the land use, uh, update that would go along with them, so it's two parts. That land use portion, the planning board has to also, um, take a look at and concur with. Did you get that, Eileen?
I got that today, yes.
You got it, well.
She sent, she sent. I did not get the map.
Well, the map came from here, so. The, the map was, the map, we already approved the zone, which is never included the, the map for some reason.
Okay.
So I don't think, because there's no ordinance.
Yeah, nothing recent that was sent to, to me for the map, and I thought it was adopted last night.
So, what, what I prepared, what I prepared for the board, if I can, mayor. Um, I prepared two resolutions for you to consider, both ordinance twenty twenty-four nineteen and then twenty twenty-four twenty-two. Um, you know, very simple, what we usually look at, um, the consistency aspect, and then if there are any recommendations. So both of those are, are ready to go for tonight, and then I could just make the changes based upon what the discussion is. I think the only outstanding one is the historic element of the master plan. That one I know we're still waiting on. Um, but other than that, I have the other two already.
Fusion on the council side of the, because we keep showing that the public hearing is open here. Are you like, so nothing has gotten onto the, for some reason, it's not been posted for you. Is, are we closing the public hearing or is it staying open until the council passes?
At least.
Yeah, so what happened was there were two components to what we did. The component of amending the zone, the district and some of the, um, home designations within the district. That was done and closed and recommended to council. The reason we left the historic element portion open on our end is because there was one change that was being recommended to council with regard to the church. Um, the, the garage at the Calvary Church site. So we figured, let's keep our historic element portion open, because that does not have to go back to council. But it certainly should incorporate whatever other changes to the district or designations within the district that they may recommend. So that's why we kept that open. So once you guys approve and send back the change to the historic district and the designations, then we can do both, close the public hearing on the other one and give the recommendations with regard to the, um, historic element as well.
I don't think we've even introduced the historic.
So, yeah, you're gonna have to introduce the amendment to the historic district.
Yeah, into the planning board?
Yep, yep.
Alright, so we'll do that on the fifteenth, we'll introduce the map.
Yep.
On the fifteenth. I don't know when we are meeting, because I can't remember, it's that weird, I think it's that weird, uh, month because of, uh, because of Columbus Day.
Okay, yeah, I can, let me see what we have.
Being off by week, so.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because you're off from us. But whatever the case may be, if you want to give me a buzz, I can, you know, just specifically say what should be added to the agenda. But once that's done, then we could take care of both aspects of that at our next meeting and close the loop on both.
Okay. Fine.
So we're finding confusion then. Um, okay, so those other two ordinances are both on late agenda, later on we will get to those, um, later on. So, let's move to, um, item five, professional reports. Does any, any of our professionals know any reports today? Kara?
Just quickly, um, I, I, I don't think we have to go into executive session, but what we had discussed with regard to a potential meeting with the new owner um, of the sign, I did send out a request, I have not heard back yet. So as soon as I do, I'll update you and, uh, we'll go from there.
Thank you. Alright, item six is approval of the minutes from September tenth, twenty twenty four meeting, um. They were, they were distributed, um, does anybody have any comments or additions or amendments to make to those that were sent out? No, so you're none. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from September tenth, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Eileen.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Was not there.
Ms. Waitsman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yeah.
Oh.
For the record, I'm here. I got here right before Kara gave her report, but I would abstain anyway.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
It was, yeah, for the record, Mr. Dosh and Miss Ian, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent time. Um, okay, thank you. Then, let's go to item seven, which is a resolution twenty twenty-four fifteen for Plaza One LLC application twenty twenty-four oh five.
First, there were some, uh, minor changes made. The testifying witness, Mr. Grunberg informed me that the spelling, uh, was, uh, Braniak, B-R-A-N-I-A-K. I had I-C-K, so I changed that. And on page five, there was a sentence, um, with planning McNannas had noted that proposed use is not a retail, I had office that was changed to use, so it would be proposed use for some retail use, and that was it.
Okay, so everybody saw, um, that, that, you said I drafted that, right, right?
Yeah.
Um, so does anybody have any comments on that resolution before we, um, vote to resolve it? I don't see anybody.
And those that can, uh, are eligible to vote, Mayor Carroll, Fasaro, um, Ms. Giffen, Mr. Cook, Ms. Waitsman, Mr. Semino, uh, Ms. Swingle and Mr. Show.
Alright, so, uh, can we call a roll for that then, Eileen? Do I need a motion? Thank you, sir. I got ahead of myself. Now can we call the roll?
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Waitsman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Ms. Swingle?
Yes.
Mr. Show?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bye.
And, um, I think it's worth, um, I can just want to say about that one, that was one of the ones where we were being asked to determine um, an appeal based from the zoning officer, and I think it's just worth saying that, just as we, um, changed the decision of the zoning officer, doesn't mean if those contours again, it has to be changed, right? We, we have a choice on our individual as case needed base. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes, alright. Okay, alright, let's move to, um, item eight then, um. This is completeness, uh, for, it's listed here as the HCDC application twenty twenty-four oh eight. Again, this is one of these appealing decision of an administrative officer. So it's an interesting one for completeness, right?
Right, so I did a review of September twentieth, I, uh, used our new checklist, um, as for prior documentation. Uh, there was a few items that the applicant was asking for waivers on, there was two items I found that they didn't submit.
Uh, subsequent to that, the attorney for the applicant, um, did submit an email with an explanation
on what the, what the waivers they were requesting, that was one of the missing items, they need to have some support further, they're asking for waivers, so that was submitted. Uh, and they also addressed, uh, an issue relating to the fees and explanation how the fees were calculated. Uh, and, um, and, uh, item dealing with the number of copies of the submission. So, I did an updated email indicating the, uh, items, checklist items A and B that had been addressed, item W was also addressed. That just left, uh, items, uh, C and D, uh, one of which they're, well, they're asking for a waiver on, on, on that one. Uh, and, uh, and I, I M D, I had indicated was really not applicable. Item D says acting, uh, outlined what the variances they're asking for, in this case they're asking for interpretation, they don't need a variant, so that would really be not applicable. Uh, so they're asking for a waiver on an applicant's disclosure statement, the attorney explained why they weren't able to do that. I think the board has that information, that's the subject board would have to decide as completeness matter. Uh, and the, uh, item J, uh, was something I'd previously recommended, they ran a waiver from and then providing deeds and title information, I thought this kind of application now was really not useful information, so.
Because they are looking to.
It's just an occupancy in the unit in the building.
And C was the list of officers, wasn't it, something that they, did they, they explain because it was.
They explained you're in, in, in a flux situation, so.
So that would be something they would want us to grant a waiver for, for completeness, that they don't have to have that right now.
Right, so you, you'd have two waivers, you had a waiver on item C and a, my prior recommendation for a waiver on item J.
Yeah, and then I would recommend if the board's going to make a motion granting those waivers, um, that once the issue with regard to the officers has been resolved, that they submit that to the board, so we have that for our files.
That'd be temporary waiver.
Correct.
So C would be a temporary waiver, J we're saying is the permanent, we're proposing a permanent waiver. Alright, does anybody on the board have any comments or queries on this one for anybody before we, uh, look at completeness determination? Do you feel strongly? Do you feel middling?
You know, I'll, I'll move that we deem the application complete with a temporary waiver, and then C, the disclosure statement, and a, uh, permanent waiver on J.
Okay.
Yes.
How about you comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
I'll second.
Okay, and, um, who's eligible to vote on this? If anybody abstaining on this one is a good point. Uh, Kara, do we make a note now or does it further, if people are abstaining?
Uh, yes, let's make that note now. If there's anybody, I would just like to put, you know, uh, the reason for the abstention, because no one's precluded from, uh, participating in this unless there's some sort of conflict issue, so.
You want that now?
Yeah.
Okay, abstaining as I'm a member of the Democratic Committee of Hundred and County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other than that, can we call a roll on this one on this completeness?
Yes, uh, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? I, I'm kidding, yes. Uh, Mr. Dashman?
Yes.
Ms. Waitsman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
And Ms. Swingle?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's actually one more, um, uh, Mr. Echo, excuse me.
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, so, um, uh, then that would go. And then I was looking in the bag, because I wrote a little note, it was like, the upcoming meetings and what would go in each one. And it's, I think I left it on my desk, um.
Well, the next one that would be available would be, yeah, it's only two weeks and they wouldn't have me, the evidence. Right, and then the next one would be October twenty-second. I can reach out to council to see. Um, right now, October eighth, we have, uh, completeness for Liberty Village, uh, public hearing for National Pools and one ten Main Street, and
and then for twenty-second has nothing, so we could put it publicly here and into that for this.
Yeah, I could reject it, or attorney, and ask if the twenty-second is.
Yes, because, because, um, as well.
October.
That's twenty-second is too close to the eighth for Liberty Village to notice for that one, so that would have to, so, let's, um, with the absence of um, anybody here, but we'll put it on the agenda tentatively for that date then, and provided they can get their notice and whatever else they need.
Okay.
That is where.
Yes, I will check that escrow and make sure that there's sufficient, um, stuff to public hearing.
Right, I'll make a statement in chair, I didn't do that, yes, for situations. Um, okay, alright, then, um, let's move on then to item, oh, well, actually, item nine. Um, this is the, we, we talked about this with the mayor and Kara earlier. This is the public hearing for the master plan hiss- historic district element, which, um, I propose we carry again to the next meeting until, just basically until after council have done what they need to do, until we need to change.
Twenty-second, because I think the, the council meeting is until the fifteenth.
Well, we'd introduce on the fifteenth, I mean, if there's a public hearing.
Right, so if you introduce on the fifteenth, then it would come back to the board on the twenty-second.
Yes. But that would be. Works. See, hang on a second, because October got screwed up, because.
And then November's a little mixed up as well.
Yeah.
Well, right, yeah.
Long came it to long, yes. This could be like.
So, uh, we have, our first meeting, which will get introduced is on the fifteenth, and then our second meeting in a month is the twenty-eighth of October.
Right, so we'd have to do that on the twenty-second, so it's in between those.
Correct.
Okay.
That was, no, if you want to carry it to the twenty-second.
Carry it to the twenty-second then, yep.
Yeah.
But no, for the nervous fever.
Right. Thank you. Alright, we'll be marching on, number ten already, uh, consistency review, this is for ordinance twenty twenty-four nineteen. The ordinance amended in section two six one one of the code entitled zoning map. This was distributed to everybody, it was a bit kind of last minute, because this came last night from the council, um, but I need an explanation for the board of what we're doing here, do you?
Right, so as the mayor alluded to, this, um, ordinance just updates the zoning map um, based off of the rezonings that were recommended on the master plan, specifically about the, uh, in the northern portion of the borough, like those, uh, parcels that were in the PO district, just rezoning to TC. And then, um, I believe one parcel also was resoned to PSP, like public, uh, zone, and then, um, the ordinance also removes the PO district and removes the brush overlay.
And this is something that came from our master plan work, wasn't it?
From the, it came from the ordinance subcommittee last year, and for some crazy reason, everybody thought that this was approved, and it never was.
Right.
They like, just.
So we're just tidying up?
We're tidying up.
Tidying up some of the good old discuss. Right.
And it'll help clean up some of the stuff that's happening with the zoning officer, because it gets rid of all those SIC codes.
It does.
It does, well, at least in these zones.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Like you can't have ready heat, right, we discussed.
We can have ready heat.
I think, I don't know.
I would have ready heat, but it shouldn't be. No, it's a ready.
Hmm, yes, okay, alright, we best not talk about that, but, um.
Yeah, exactly, thanks.
I don't know why we're talking about that. So, in terms of a consistency review, Kara, what do we have to do formally with this?
Uh, yes, so we need to make a motion, uh, to deem that the ordinance is not substantially inconsistent with your master plan. And if there are any recommendations, which I expect here, uh, there wouldn't be, because we're just kind of tying everything up in a neat little bow. Um, I would just say that motion should also include, I'll amend the resolution I have, I had reference Beth in it, I will put Brett in it. Um, and I'll also include the voting as it takes place tonight, um, as well as their finding.
And is everybody eligible to vote for this one?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on this, and given that this has been proposed by the, uh, come from the work of the committee? Um, I think I trust the people from our board that were on the committee did the work.
There was, there was a unanimous vote last year to send it to the council.
I'm not prejudging anything, why, I'm just assuming, I'm just asking the question, right, so here is none, is anybody, um?
I'll make the motion that, um, uh, that, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash nineteen is not substantially inconsistent to our master plan.
And I'll second that.
What he said.
What he said. Uh, thank you, Eileen, could we call a roll on that then, please?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasaro?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Dashman?
Yes.
Ms. Waitsman?
Yes.
And the Swingle?
Yes.
Alright, moving on to item eleven, this again is a consistency review of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, did I do, what did I just say, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-two, okay. And ordinance amending chapter twenty-six, zoning in section two six three one signs to amend the regulations for temporary signage. So, we do need a discussion, a, a explanation of this one.
If I may, um, so earlier this year, I received, um, a call from our property maintenance officer and our zoning officer. Uh, because a not-for-profit in town was going to have an event, came in for a permit and to find out about permitting temporary signs, and found out that at some point, and I don't know, I have no idea when this was, and neither did I, um, six or eight years ago, approximately, maybe ten years ago, some, some administration passed a temporary sign ordinance requiring a fifty-dollar fee per sign. So this not-for-profit was wanting to put out, you know, twenty signs around town, was going to basically be charged a thousand dollars. And our zoning officer, uh, didn't have the heart to do it, and, um, uh, fully read the ordinance, and they contacted me, the two of them contacted me, um, at that point he made a judgment call and allowed them to put up ten signs for fifty dollars, um, as a one-time thing, and then asked that the borough clean this ordinance up. So, we've had, I want to say, I don't even know, councilwoman, six or eight work sessions refining, um, a temporary sign ordinance, and it addresses both for-profit and not-for-profit. Uh, basically, if you're already paying for a permit, for example, you're a resident paying for a garage sale permit, you get X number of free signs included in that permit. Same thing if you're a, uh, for-profit or a not-for-profit, there's a fifty-dollar fee for one, there's a twenty-five-dollar fee for one, fifty-dollar fee for the other, you get X number of signs with your permit. Uh, you're allowed to put them up two weeks in advance in, of an, of an event, they have to come down within three days after the event. Uh, there is a ten-dollar per sign, per day violation, um, if they don't take them down, because our property maintenance officer spends an inordinate amount of time removing signs all over this town. Um, so it, uh, there is a stick, um, it addresses also uh, coming soon banner kinds temporary signs, uh, allowing those to go up for sixty, I think it's sixty days prior to an event, but it needs to suggest when they're actually coming, um, and then they can, uh, you know, coming soon this Christmas, coming soon this spring. Always, it's a, not the real one. Um, so, uh, it does not address, my kid graduated from Hunter Central High School kind of signs. It does not, it does not address, you know, the one-offs where somebody might have a, uh, church bizarre sign on their lawn, nor does it address any political sign to me, so, but it updates the whole thing and makes it a lot kinder and gentler and much more enforceable than, um, than the current ordinance and, you know, the council, and especially our professionals are very anxious for us to get this thing done, so they don't have to continue to, um, allow that, you know, I mean, they're basically looking the other way right now, and they're very uncomfortable doing that.
Hmm.
On this fifty-dollar per sign fee.
But we're only responsible, because none of that is, we don't have any of that from a fee perspective, and all we have is.
Your land use portion of that, right, exactly, that goes with it, um, that's right, that's exactly right.
So I, I do have some questions, just making sure that I understand, because there's not many changes to it at all. Um, other than, um, lengthening the days after an event, it used to be seven, now it's fourteen. Um, so, when you.
Well, that's for a sale or lease, not an event, right?
Well, there's fourteen, fourteen, and three days after.
Yeah, three days after.
So three is like a stage has a truck show, truck sale, you have three days to take them down, um, you have a garage sale, you have three days to take it down, um. So.
So the, the only thing that I was confused at on, when I'm thinking, I get the solve for the permitting, because many of us didn't even know that existed, on, on permitting, but, um, just for my own notification, the FCP is exempt from this, I've been told. Because the FCP has large banners all over town that are much larger than anything that's allowed.
So the F, FCP collects public taxes and is, is part of.
Right, so they are allowed to do, because I, I think some of, some folks have come to me as a sign review committee, uh, member and said, but I don't understand, they have banners on the fence, for example, that say, you know, sip and stroll Thursdays, and
Right.
And, and I'm assuming that that falls under something that has not changed, which is just a banner, a temporary banner. Or it doesn't fall under any of it, because it's government.
It doesn't really, it doesn't really fall under any of it, but we have asked the executive director to be mindful that is these, you know, if the sip and strolls are every Thursday, that's one thing, but if it's, you know, um, the poor beard of NATO has got an empty date, get it off.
But there's, so, so again, we're not, you know, that's, there's no solid, there's no need for a solid for that, because that is, and essentially part of the government.
Right.
Right?
But, to your point, Todd, I see your point, part five on the, on the, on section two, page two of this mentions a default banner, and it says a banner which is exempt. A banner designated by FCP, and this, this wording refers to when we used to put the banner just over Main Street, when we did Music on Main, it was, there was always one across by the courthouse. Maybe we need to take the, the specific, specific wording out, that it can be FCP, any FCP.
That is.
As deemed for what they.
No, there is a separate banner ordinance in this town, and we're, we're working on revising that as well.
Hmm.
I, I saw that FCP banner falling under, uh, item D up above, which is under temporary banners, because it says at the courthouse Union Hotel, which is, we're waiting. at the courthouse Union Hotel, which is, we're waiting for some infrastructure to go back.
Exactly.
Um, but, uh, it does say, or two at the location of business of event and up to three additional locations in the borough. So the things on the fence on, uh, Dave Dallas's property, for example, that, you know, the FCP has sort of taken that fence. Or, um, they, they used to be up in front of the filling station. But regardless, just so, just so I'm clear, it doesn't really matter for the FCP, because that's the government and they can choose to put a sign up. And I mean, their signs are larger than, than what's allowed as well, so this is not that, this is more folks that are, um, advertising an event. Um, the only thing that I found awkward, if you will, if that's the right word, is a campaign driver event, um, with no end date, so I walked around town to see, so these are the, these are the, the no end dates, Black Lives Matter. Uh, hate has no home here.
So it's almost private property, they are not a public disorder.
Yeah, but, but, right, that, that's, so as long, as long as somebody does it, because then like, uh, support for Ukraine, like they was the one who people.
No, because we are, we were really adamant that we weren't going to touch, um, individual private. Well, the coun, some members of council were adamant, others were willing to take it on and yes, I probably know. I just, we just decided to like not include that, but.
So this is more business.
If it's, but they have to be on, right, they have to be on private property, they're not allowed to be on easements or anything like that, yeah, so. Right, so it's included, like I said, my kid graduated from, you know, left, under central, come to Maculata Festival, Black Lives Matter, all that stuff, uh, you know, including political signs are all.
So that all comes out, which is great, because that would be a nightmare for our zoning officer.
Right.
But the, uh, the sign for the lease or sale of a building, there would be some in town that would be under violation of this, because you didn't change it. Eight square feet, but there were some very large for-sale signs.
And, and some of them have already been cited by our zoning, our, our property manager officer, some of them already have some.
Okay, so, so again, I didn't know if, if you were trying to clean things up, because I had number one, eight square feet is essentially two foot by four foot.
Right.
Two and a half by two and a half.
Well, he, he looks at it more like, you know, like some of those large for-sale lease signs.
Yes.
Are, have these massive wooden stakes driven into the ground and he considers it permanent, not temporary, because of the way they've been driven into the ground and the size of them. They fall under something else he has where he's been like, you need to choose these. That's not our problem, you know, he's got some other ordinance that he's going after on that.
Okay.
But, um, small real estate signs would fall under, um.
Yes.
I mean, it's covered in your, like, if you're having your roof done.
Yeah, no, I read, I read all that, I was trying to find the, the fix, like, walking around town and think, wow, okay, that for-sale sign is about four feet by six feet on some.
Yeah, Dave is on it.
Okay, so, but that would fall under here, because think about the, um, the, um, application method, because you could take a for-sale sign, it's like some, some real estate agents have those beautiful signs going on the big giant posts that somewhere feel like permanent, you know, they're on, versus the little.
Yeah, boy, the one, the X T berries.
Yes, yes, but they're still for-sale signs.
Yes. Right, but that's not considered, like, Dave said that is not a temporary sign, so, well, maybe they fixed it, I don't know, but.
Okay. Yeah, because that didn't change, I was expecting that to change with the eight square feet, but then.
No, no. No. You know, the council was very thoughtful, there was a lot of debate, including right up to last night and, um, uh, you know, I just got to referee this, the six of them, so I had a lot of fun. Um, so, you know, but it was really, like I said, it's really about getting this fifty dollar per sign, per sign fee out of there. Uh, because it's, it's like untenable, is the word, it's an untenable amount of money to charge people.
And the, um, if it's on private property, but it's advertising an event?
Yes, if it's on your house advertising an event, it's your house advertising an event. If it's at the business advertising an event, then it falls under this, because they had to get the permit, right? They had to get a permit for, for so many days for their event, and then you took one of the signs, because you know the people who put it on your lawn. Um, it's different because it's on your lawn versus if they put it in some easements and they put it in front of Dallas's signs and they put it down on the corner of, uh, in, uh, well, we don't care if they put it in the corner of shop, right, because that's sort of township, that's their problem. Um, but you know, if they put it down stangle, so they have, then this falls under the permit, but if they give you one and you put it on your lawn, then it's your sign. So.
So in your original example, man, you said a nonprofit came, they could have put, said that they were putting numbers on private property, they wouldn't have had.
It probably, it might have been able to get away with that, I'm not quite sure, I might be speaking out of turn on this, because I'm, you know, Dave may not interpret it that way, because it doesn't fall under Black Lives Matter, it's an event now, so he still might say, you gotta get it down in three days.
Right.
Um.
Which is reasonable, if something's gone, like, let's, let's tidy up and let's not have things go.
Right, right.
But that's what I was thinking, but there's also like the climate change signs that are, some of them are sold, I think that's from the two election cycles ago and so.
Right, but then it's just a state, not a dated event is what I mean, okay.
Right.
So, so is it, so I am basically saying that like this, uh, because of course we're not privy to all the other stuff as Todd said, but if effectively this is tidying it up in terms of being clearer on the fees that need to be found, but we still retain the ability to, for the property maintenance for people to go after the signs that we don't need to be got, you know, is that fair enough?
And, and the council fell strongly on the events, um, uh, posted, you know, more than two weeks prior.
Yes, that was a real fast unanimous, yeah.
Okay, because I, I know that the, the big events in town, we typically do thirty or sixty days out.
Right.
Car shows, house tours, um.
Stores, government.
Government.
Yeah.
It's these house.
We, we asked.
Car shows, I think, car shows.
Car shows, good, volunteer us and.
And they advertise general car shows and then the, the dates are, they, they only, and.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, that's our event, that's our event.
And then the, um.
Poor beard maintenance is our event.
But they could, they, meaning we, meaning zoning officer, could go after those that put things on easements. I see things, uh, power washing, uh, wanting to recall.
Those were already illegal, they're illegal under state law and we have an ordinance and our zoning officer.
Does go by and pick.
Not our zoning officer, our property maintenance officer goes by and, um, calls the people to get them down, gives them the opportunity, does take them down, there's some right now down by Steve's that he needs a ladder for, JCP and L.
Before they end up, before they end up right here on some.
No, he throws this away now.
I see the big step.
He throws them away, JCP and L also is working on getting those sandblasting signs down, because those people continue to put them up. So JCP and L is also on that to make it a permanent fix.
Okay. Riveting discussion.
That was like, I mean, he's on like, he's been doing this now for six weeks. One more.
Yeah.
Sorry, time is running.
And just for the, thanks for the record, and note that Bob left the meeting.
It's better tracked, so.
So from a land use perspective, um, the base, the, you know, the way I raise, you know, our land use, what we're, what we're charged for here, such minimal changes, I, I mean, I guess not denominates, Cara, as you would say, but, you know, it really did just increase, it gave people a longer leave way to take the sign down and for an event, it gave a, a window two weeks prior, three days after, and that's really the only change. You know, so I'm happy, I mean, we can have discussion afterwards, I'm happy to, to move that this is not substantially inconsistent with. Um, with our, our master plan work or the zone, zoning goes with. So I'll, I'll gladly make that motion.
I'll second.
Oh, that again, hello.
So now is the, I mean, I, I, we had discussion, and, and I'll drop my supply.
Does anybody else have discussion based on around that motion that we have, um, open to us?
Oh, this is very clear, so it, it makes straightforward and makes sense, so I like it.
I think obviously it will be very hard.
We're making this zoning officer.
And our property maintenance officer also, because right now he's got, there's no teeth in, in the current ordinance.
Well, that's, 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 was the interest for that, so.
First discussion.
Okay. Because if nobody else has any, um, comments or raised them, and, and then can we call the roll on voting on the motion? Mr. Coke, may I please?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Dachshund?
Yes.
Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pissaro?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
And Miss Swallow?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, I'll get that amended and over for execution.
Thank you.
Both of them.
Great.
Excellent. All right, um, item twelve, discussion, planning board application revisions to Form A. Is this, are you late in this discussion?
Uh, I, I said, um, I got a, an email from, uh, Ken Deal and Joshua Parks, um, our sewer and water supervisors. And they would like to, right now the, the application has Form A, which includes the sewer and water as a combined form. They would like to separate those. It's, uh, minor, um, from what I've understood from them and it does say, um, kind of goes towards the, the checklist as well, it says a well-served letter, will continue to keep that Form A and, um, after speaking to Cara, um, it sounds like it's something that can be done at the board level, doesn't, it's not required by ordinance or set by ordinance, so.
This is a Form A part one and a Form A part two?
Yeah, so Cara was shaking her head.
Yeah, yep, so Bob and I took a look at it, took a look at the new checklist and the language. As long as we continue to reference it as a Form A, we're fine. Um, if they want to change it, then, you know, we may have to change the reference on the checklist, but I think we just leave it as is and, and everything is fine.
And the original Form A was a document that was, um, that came from our water and sewer department, they created it, so, so again, looking at this, if, if they create a Form A that was combined and now they want to create Form A dash one and two and it's a part, I mean, I love, you know, that's what I love about this.
It's water department Form A, sewer department Form A, and I can insert that in a party.
So are they going to actually be two separate pieces of paper?
It will all be in the same application, but yes, there's two pages on for each of them.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like there's two words that will.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry, um, it literally is the exact same form except for question four on the top of page three says description of water versus description of sewer. Can I ask why we're creating this burden for an applicant to have to fill out the same four pages almost identically twice, like what, what, what's the problem with water and sewer that they're trying to solve by splitting it out?
That I don't know, they, they made the request, um.
Yeah, and I.
The only, the only thing I could think of from a practical standpoint, I, I, I hear what Jeff's saying, you know, there's one change. Um, I don't know if there's been a problem up until this point with transferring it from one to the other, do they submit one to each department for them to fill out, like, I don't know procedurally how that worked out, but the only problem I could see is if they submit it to water, who then has to get it over to sewer and, you know, that that might have taken a while, but other than that, I, I don't see any difference either.
You know.
As far as I can tell.
My concern is if you get a, a discrepancy between the two on the same applicant, one small, one large, like, isn't it the demand on sewer based on water consumption? So then how do you reconcile the two, we got two separate forms?
I just know that there, not everybody's on public water in this town, so it may be that.
Well, it's fourteen of us, I'm one of them on a private well.
There's more than fourteen, I think there's thirty-six private wells in town.
Oh, thirty-six. There's also eighteen hundred households, so it is, it's a small hand, it's a small handful, I mean.
I mean, I don't know why you're asking for it, but.
Uh, would you, would you like, Jeff, would, would you like me to reach out to them and find that, find an answer to that question?
I, I'm just, I'm just trying to make it as easy as possible for an applicant, where if the first three pages are literally the identical information that we have Form A, which three pages has the exact same information on, it's, it's one thing, and then there's two pages that are different. One gets filled out and executed by the water department, one gets executed and filled out by the sewer department, if this is, like, I just, again, I'm just trying to make this as easy as possible for an applicant who is going to be submitting, anyone who's submitting is Form A, they got a lot of work to do, right? It's not a little project, it's a big to-do, so, um, and again, the, the point that, that, that Don was raising, like, what if there's discrepancy, like, what, what's prevailing here, so if we can figure out what the problem they're trying to solve is, and if it's literally just who gets to look at it first and whose paper needs signatures and it's harder if it gets lost between one and the other, then I think there's another, there's, we can, that's solvable. Right, I just, I just want to, I just, right?
If you take, if you take the distillery site, that wasn't always a distillery, it was retail stores. And, um, now it's a distillery, which presumably could be using a tremendous amount of public water. And that Form A has never been submitted, even though the water department has been asking for years. So this may be a change of use thing, where people already have sewer and it's just an easy little whatever, but it's about, it's about a change of use, whether it's, uh, tea berries going to a restaurant, now, you know, which was a law office with a couple of lawyers in it, now it's going to have ninety people in it, which is a different water usage, it's a different sewer usage. I mean, that may be why they're asking for it, because uses change and, and then need changes.
No, I, I agree with, I agree with, with the example that you're giving, Mayor, what I'm saying is that, that's not what they're asking, they're asking us to change the form, not when the form gets used.
And wouldn't this also, I, I, I read this too as, doesn't this just double the fees? I read this as, because the fees, the fee schedule remains the same, a hundred and two fifty on both, not, not together, you used to be on, on the same form, right? Uh, the fee schedule, but now the fee schedule is two separate ones, so would it essentially double the fees to an applicant, that's why.
That's the reasoning.
That, I, that's the way I look at it, maybe they had to cover their, you know, whoever reviewing or.
Well, and if that's the case, then, then Karen, if you can find that out, because I think then, that, that if, if, if the, if they need more, if it's, if, if their question is, we need to cover the cost of review by both water and sewer department personnel, and we need to charge more fee, then that's fine, but I don't know if we can do it by changing the form, that may require something else to change.
Right, yeah, I'll find out what their driver was and see if this is the best way, they might have felt that this was the simplest way to effect the change that they needed it for, um, but we might, it might be better to do it another way, but I'll find that out. And we'll report back to the board next time. So we'll, we had discussion, I mean, we definitely did discussion, I was useful, thank you very much, everyone.
Wish Mike was here.
Yes, the one, you just answered the question. Yeah, but I'll give them a call and we'll work that out, no worries, yeah. But good, good, uh, good comments, that's, that's why we have this board, everyone has distinct viewpoints on it. All right, does anybody else want to raise anything else from that before we move on?
No.
Move on, right, we're doing so well right now, all right, oh, we're on thirteen, chair items. Right, um, so before we go on to the next meeting, I want to raise something, um, something out there in terms of, um, escrow for applications. So, um, I'm raising this because we've had various applications where, well, number one, Eileen wants us to have a discussion about.
The fee schedule.
The fee schedule for the escrows.
But that's set by ordinance, so that's a more.
But it's set by, it's something that we're communicate, we want to have a discussion on at some point, um. You were going to, for that Form A, pull up a schedule of what the average escrow spend has been, under the escrow was spent for typical applications.
Yeah, I still have to go through some of that data.
And some of this has been, what this has been driven by is the difficulty with some applicants that Eileen has when she's trying to, when the escrow is almost depleted and she's trying to get them to provide ex, additional escrow and not have an, um, teeth, as it were, or you say, you, you ask them for the thing to be increased and then it takes a while.
It takes a while, but there's also delay, and I don't know if this, there's a fix for it. You, application comes in, you get the fees, we set them up for completeness, that's one meeting. And then it's, say, it's in August, I don't get those bills until September. Now, sometimes that's, that whole escrow balance is used up because the, the, the fee schedule is outdated. You know, we're getting almost, you know, two hundred, you know, a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars an hour for some of the professionals. So by the time I get the bill, that escrow is almost completely depleted and, um, the other issue I find is that, like, to have a realistic amount for an applicant to even an expectation of how much it would cost, and that's not. So there's some, some pushback on that too from some of the applicants, I get some email saying, I didn't think it would cost this much, you know, I had no idea, and, you know, they've had an attorney, they have those fees as well and it becomes, so, I don't, and, and then they, it's very hesitant to, when I ask for, for additional escrow.
But what, what this has, and the reason I want to amend this or address this, is that what it has meant in the past is that the borough has effectively been bankrupting applications by not having, by expending the fees that rightly needed to be expended in order to process applications properly as well. In order to process applications properly as we're supposed to. But then the escrow is knocked down, we've been a little, maybe a little too easygoing with people. We want to help people, but. Not to the point where we're putting the borough at risk of expending monies, um, so I'm gonna. The one thing I will do to support Eileen is put out there as a public notice to all applicants and their attorneys. Is that watch your escrow level and discuss with us, um, before we. Move to a next stage of an application where we may be expending a large amount of your escrow. And we will not move forward unless, uh, additional, so, what's the word I'm looking for? Sufficient, um, escrow, and we can work with people on that and try and work that out, um, based on previous applications. If sufficient escrow is not in place, we will not be putting people on the agenda.
Are you, are you working on giving us a suggested increase?
I can, I.
I, uh, you could give us, yeah, what, if you take like the last twenty applications.
Yeah, um.
Wait, what was the total escrow that was collected?
Mm-hmm.
And then we, that would give us a number to work with that will take some of the pressure off of you.
Yeah, I can, I can get a, an analysis, so. What type of application and how much that costs. I mean, it's so varied and, um. Frankly, from, you know. Depending on the, uh, each application is so unique. And we're getting some different types of applications.
Is there a difference between, okay, I'm building ground up or. Or, so there's a difference to me between Millie's, the hotel, what's going on at Liberty Village versus I'm going to bring. A business into an existing location and retrofit it and.
It's the smaller ones that are, seem to be the, the issue. I mean, the larger problems.
There must be, there must be some correlation. If we did a little bit of analysis between us, I mean. There must be some correlation between, I think the correlation will be between, um. Plans, the number of plan sheets that are needed for a project and the escrow that's spent. There must be, because, you know, we say how, if you've got a, a folder full of plans or you've got two sheets. Necessarily, that's a bit of an indicator of the size of the project and the complexity, or if you've got a multiple.
Got through like the writing project, got through it one night, Chico Way got through it one night.
Right.
Um, yeah, Max, uh, Dolce took two nights for free.
Took a little while.
Three, four, but it was more.
It was extensions and things like that.
It was more, right, it was more complicated.
Yeah, there was a lot of testimony on that.
Yeah, and.
And they, they not problem, and it's, it was more of the smaller, uh, your smile, um. Uh, Seabird, uh, you know, um, that's some, some of the things that are, um, in the, in the works now.
So it's, it's people who, like, knew to this and really, they're one-offs, that they've never done something before. Initial escrow is seven hundred dollars, so, you know, by the time you get it through completeness, um, it's, it's almost gone.
Okay. Yeah, so we, yes, we can work on, on making suggestions.
Work with some of the, the more professionals, what, how many hours do you think that this is going to take? And then we can get an idea because, um.
It just sounds like we need to update the escrow ordinance.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I can, um, and the rest of the board, I can just tell you that this is a New Jersey land use issue. I mean, every town, every applicant is dealing with this and. Applicants, especially the smaller ones, are consistently having an issue, and I can say this from both sides of the table. Um, representing them as well as the boards, um, that it's expensive, but again, it is what it is. It's a New Jersey issue. Um, what most towns are doing are exactly what you're doing right now. Taking a look, seeing how much the average is, updating the ordinances. And, um, Karen and I talked about this a little bit. I think you might wanna also consider making a recommendation to council. That there be some teeth in the escrow ordinance that says. And I'll just give you some examples from other towns, but, you know, some are a little more aggressive than others. For example. If you have a five thousand dollar escrow upfront. Once that escrow goes below a thousand, you must replenish it up to the original amount. I don't know what we ask for on the second round, but if there's some teeth in there that says what you have to ask for, what you have to bring it back up to. It helps Eileen with saying, well, look at section blah, 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 this is what you have to do. There are also some towns that have in there that if you don't have it replenished, then you're not coming before the board. I mean, I, I've had to come to some towns with checks in hand. Now, again, very aggressive, but this is what. Some towns are doing to rectify the issue that you're all having. So there's a lot of different ways to do it, but the more teeth in the ordinance for Eileen to deal with, the better.
Money for a really long time. It's been more over the last year.
And I, you know, and it's, you know, and there's been like, you know, one, one developer. Like, how many times did, did he say, I'll have it in by next week, I'll have it in by next week, and that went on for weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks. Two dressed, two dressed in jeans in public to the attorney.
All right, let's not talk about anybody specific.
No names. Gotta do something aggressive.
Yeah.
I like the idea of, of council perhaps looking at the escrow ordinance. So I real, I like that idea, Marsha, hey, if it gets below a certain amount. You, you don't come back to this board, you don't take the time of our professionals until it's bad.
I know, but we just need, we just need a suggestion. And I'll, I may do the research, talk to the professionals and get a number.
Yes, a number space, a number.
And I can take that, look at other towns.
Yeah.
And see what they're doing and what their, their fee schedule is like as well, and I'll take a look at what are, what we've.
Hmm.
Cost of them.
And, um, and when, uh, one, one thing that, um, as an, as a part of notice to applicants as well, really is that. If they get their ducks in a row and don't keep bringing extra pieces of evidence to a public hearing, if everything. Is given to us ahead of time, we all have time to read it ahead of the meeting, the meetings go quicker because we're. We're not re, looking at information that's just been presented that day. So it is in their hands to minimize how much is spent to make a public hearing go as fast as possible. Um, that is totally on the applicants, and that is something I can say at consistency and say by the way, you know. Make sure everything's ready, make sure everything's in, in time, which is why we have to be, again, strong with. Not setting public hearings, not reducing the time. We need, need time for our professionals to create reports. Need time for. The board as volunteers to read those reports and absorb them before a public hearing.
And time for invoices to come in to see what those balances are now looking at.
And that's part of why I've been driving to make sure that we, you know, don't rush things, don't push things, so we do things in a proper timely manner. And then we do them better properly first time.
I think so, like, where the, the board has, you know, a little bit of leverage. Whether you go to a public hearing, whether you go, you know, adopt a resolution, whether you do compliance or something like that.
Correct.
Waiting for that resolution, um, you can hold it up at, at certain places.
Just out of curiosity, like Liberty Village, what, what was their escrow requirement?
They, they, it, they, um, submitted twenty-five thousand dollars, black fee. They should be doing a, a, uh, fee calculation and Bob would take a look at that to make sure that that is, um. Part of the ordinance.
So it wasn't like five grand?
No, it was twenty-five thousand.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the larger ones definitely have a, a calculation based on square footage and acreage and, and I think things along those lines. Um, Eileen brought up another good point though, which sometimes, you know, again, due to delay in. Invoices and things like that. Something else we could consider is resolution is not prepared or adopted. Until we know that either the escrow has been replenished to where it's supposed to be. And we could even have the invoices in from the professionals up until that point. Um, but, you know, there's a couple of different things we could do, but I, I think the estimate is, is gonna be very important, and that's the easiest thing, cause you get it upfront. Otherwise, it's much harder to get on the backend and that, right, pretty much goes with everything.
Things that I've been talking to Beth about a lot is resolution compliance and the fact that. Um, we really haven't had a process to make sure that stuff has been happening. It just seems like. You know, we do the resolution and then they disappear, we disappear and.
We trust them.
You know, so, you know, I've, I've been asking her to like start working with Bob regarding resolution compliance and a. Plan process on how to do that, and that also needs to come out of an escrow account.
Mm-hmm.
You know? Hmm, um, it can be.
A lot of that usually ends up in the site plan until it gets to a construction meeting and inspection piece. And that's another fee that I, that.
But it can continue to go on.
Yeah.
So, um, that needs to be in the mix too, Kara.
Yep, it does, and I would say that that, to the Chairwoman's point, is also within the control of the applicant. I mean, if you have ten things to do for resolution compliance and you submit eight of them, and they're all in your purview to do. Then you're just dragging on the review and, and doubling the review and doubling the time. So, I mean, yes, there are some, some things to make our lives easier, um, but, you know, the applicant, small or large, you know. Does have to understand some of it's on them too.
It's only if anybody's watching.
No, agreed, agreed.
And, uh, you know, it's hard for me to be, um, an enforcement on what they're going to submit, when they're going to submit it. On top of applicants saying, you know, get that stuff in because.
I'm talking about like what they're actually building out there, whether they, you know, moved the handicap spots where we sat or posted their own personal signage. Saying, you know.
Well, that's more inspection related. That's, that's inspection as they're building. Resolution compliance is more, you're not getting your building permit to even start. Until all the conditions in the resolution are met. So, I think the second aspect of that would fall under the inspection escrow versus the. Escrow for the board application. And Bob might be able to expand on that a little bit, but there, there should be two separate fees.
Not going to go into that.
Yeah, we don't get inspection in the escrow until the, the plans are almost ready to be signed and resolution compliance has been, um, completed. Just add a couple of those.
Yeah, so maybe a little easier, Mayor, than you're even thinking about it, but, you know, that's two separate things, and maybe we have to look at them both, I don't know.
I think we need to look at the transition until, so.
Yeah, we can talk about this more offline, Kara, cause. Um, we'll talk about more.
This also replenishment suggestion you made, Kara, I think could be a good way, cause. I, I always want the applicants to be policing where they know they, amateurs go, they know they have, they need to come with it, they need, you know what I'm saying, that like. They know if it's been spent to a certain level, just like your bank account, you, you can't go overdrawn, like, right? You gotta add some more money into it. And if we have this auto, then it could, I think that could be a really good tool to achieve what we're trying to achieve here. But, yeah, let's, um, work together, I mean, if you want my help, I'll work out, I have some time to help around and work things through more. Discussions on the principle. Thank you. Um, moving on to the next meeting for your information, we have October eighth meeting. We have completeness for Liberty Village, that's a large application, make sure you have a look through that, please. There's a lot to look at, I know, um, Bob told me he had a box full. So, those of you who have it online, it's online, right? If you want paper copies. Get in touch with Eileen as soon as possible, she only got limited paper copies, right?
Right.
Mm-hmm, um. So, yes, that's.
Somebody would like to come here, there's plans on the desk back here. Yeah, there's a box there for all the missions.
Okay.
Cause they're available if you wanna come.
No, I, there's a box there, I'll put it on.
And then we have to the public hearing for the one that we didn't complete this last week, one ten Main Street. At Short Paul's. Um, is that one ten Main Street? I'll have those in track. Yes, that's what threw me off. Yeah, I'm like, okay, that's not, yeah, so there's two public hearings.
Yes.
Next week, next meeting. Um, yeah, and we just said that we would probably have looked to have the completeness from today. For the one, October twenty-second. Look ahead on the dates, everybody, October and November is a little off. With the dates, November especially, um, and if, um. If completeness next meeting goes, um, positively. That will be coming up to public hearing, um, in November, so we need, everybody, if you're going to be away, please let us know so we can make sure we've got, um.
Most likely that would be the November twelfth meeting. I think we have the.
No, it's not, it's the nineteenth, that's why it's different.
Nineteenth, twenty-sixth.
And the twenty-sixth in November, it's odd. We've got, I mean, two, two weeks. We've got a big gap because council moved their meeting night and then we, we moved later. So we're third and the fourth Tuesday, basically, in November. Yes.
So, I just, did I hear this correctly, that the meeting is not, in November's meeting is not the twelfth, but it's the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth?
That's what we did at the beginning of the year, yeah.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Yeah, cause we have veterans stay on that Monday of the eleventh.
Yeah, cause the eleventh, the council moved the eleventh to the twelfth, so we lost the twelfth, so we're on the nineteenth. Um, so I'm just asking people to be aware of the dates if you're traveling for Thanksgiving, if you're lucky enough to do that. Um, let, let Eileen know so we know, um, if we have, um, enough people to do our business. Um, other than that, given we are doing so well, I'm, I have my.
I have a question. If, um, Liberty Village gets to do completeness, why are you thinking about setting the.
November nineteenth is the earliest we can do.
That's the league.
That's the league.
I know it is, but then it's also forty-two days after we would completeness, Kara, so unless. If we, if completeness for Liberty Village goes on October eighth. I like counting those days, yeah, I think I counted. That the November nineteenth is, we have to do it by then.
No, so the forty-five days is for completeness.
Oh, okay.
In complete, we've got at least a hundred and twenty, depending on what we're looking at.
Oh, okay. Now, oh, phew. Cause like, we gotta do it that day, cause I know that's the problem with having a league of municipalities is that some of you are going to be down there. Right? You're not gonna be here.
I may not be.
Hmm, I'm running a full public hearing.
But the twenty-sixth, I may not be there.
Well, I'm not even going to the league, but I can bring my computer and zoom in.
Okay.
Um.
Let's see how we go.
As much as I hate that idea.
Right, yeah, it's not fun.
No, no, I don't mind. It's, it's a batch of stuff in a computer through a, you know, a casino, it's enormous. It's got to do with, oh, two parties and.
Okay, we're rolling cart, how about that?
There you go.
Shopping trolley. No, not the fishing head ones. Carry behind. Um, okay, um, I don't have any other items I wanna bring up today. I think it'd be nice to have a nice quick one meeting. If anybody has anything they'd like to bring up in the discussion, let me know. Good. Um, item fourteen, um, the bills were distributed by Eileen before the meeting. Can I get a motion to audit the bills?
Before I make, well, I'll, I'll make a motion, we audit the bills, but I have discussion.
Okay, then let's, um, discussion.
We need a second.
A second for the motion for the bills, please. Audit.
Oh, second.
Thank you.
So, there was just one I didn't recognize, and I apologize if I missed something. Spark Car Wash. It looks like it's the address for the old Fridays and old Juicy Seafood.
Yes, they had a pre-application meeting.
Okay, so we don't have, that is not on any document.
No, not at all.
But then would, would they have put up escrow?
Yes.
They did, so that's just something that we don't know.
A pre-application meeting and we've done this before, um, Jamie Shine and, and some other things that.
TGIF is gonna become a.
Well, Juicy Seafood.
Good, so, um, a restaurant with a liquor license is gonna become Spark Auto.
Spark Car Wash, um, yeah, they met with the.
Let's not, let's not talk about this.
No, I.
As long as we know, I don't want to talk about any merits or anything, but just typically when we see the bills. You know, you look, oh, I remember that application, I remember that applicant. When I saw Spark Car Wash, I tried to cross-reference it with an address. I just had to assume that it was a pre.
It was a potential future application.
Correct.
Okay.
And when you're done with this, I wanna have one other comment I forgot about, but go ahead, you could do your vote first.
So I have no other comments on the bills now that.
So, how do they, if that, we don't have escrow count, right?
We do.
Oh, you do? Okay, okay.
And that's been standard practice for.
Okay.
Yeah.
All good.
Okay. All right, and so, we have a vote on the motion to audit the bills, please.
Um, I missed the second, I think. Jeff, Jeff, thank you.
No. Jim?
It was Jim. Yes.
It's Jim.
Oh, thank you.
That's a bit.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Mr. Coke?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Saro, Ms. McIfan?
Yes.
Mr. Dashman?
Yes.
Ms. Waitsman?
Yes.
Mr. Semino?
Yes.
And Ms. Switler?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Kara.
So, one of the things I forgot about, and this kind of makes a lot of the applicants comment. Kind of makes a lot of the applicant's comments or lack of knowing, um. Mood. We're required by the land use law, when we submit our invoices to the town, we have to send a copy to the applicant. And we do that, and I'm sure everybody else does as well. So they're on notice, the second that you guys get these invoices to audit. They know exactly how deficient they are or what the bills are, maybe I guess that's it, they don't know. If their escrow's deficient. But they know, cause we don't have that, all we have is, our bill is, let's say, five hundred dollars. So we don't know on our bill. That they had five thousand and now it's here at this point, but they know what they submitted. And they've seen the invoices, so, you know, they know if they only submitted a thousand dollars and they've got invoices for two. That they're gonna be at least a thousand dollars deficient.
Everyone of our professionals does that?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
And actually, my escrow, uh, quest letter, it always says, your copies of the invoice should be, you know.
So again, that speaks to my point of them tracking their escrow spend, they should, they have the tools to be able to do it. They can always ask for assistance with tracking that too, right, I'm just putting the onus on. Their responsibility as much as just as, and just assuming, and just assuming they're not moving forward unless, but let's. Wrap that into a full discussion.
Yep.
Um, thank you for remembering that, Kara.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I just sparked my memory, I was like, wait a minute.
Exactly, yeah, it's perfect, that people forget.
Sending them out, yeah.
Alright, do we need to go into executive session, Kara?
We do not.
Excellent, love it, so, item sixteen, motion to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Ten past eight.
That's wrong, it's eight past eight.[1789.87]